Okay. So before I start this meeting, there's a few other things I want to go over so everybody understands kind of where we're at, what we're doing, what we're doing. So I want to welcome everybody to our April 2000, April 7th, 2020 City Council meeting. This meeting is being held remotely. I'd like to go over a few of the logistics so that we can have a productive meeting. Consistent with Governor Ginsley's order, 20-28 dated March 24th, 2020, requiring all meeting minutes, I should keep saying minutes, all meetings be held remotely. We are following the direction of that order. On this agenda for our routine and necessary actions for our council to consider, and we will provide two opportunities for the public to provide their comments if it becomes feasible. Joining me in the City Council chambers are myself, Mayor Rickner, City Council, City Administrator Katie Allen, City Clerk Anne Swenson, Police Chief Brian Asmus, Operations and Maintenance Director Jen Camp, Finance Director RJ Stevenson, Media Specialist Anita, Anita, Media Specialist, IT Support Todd Henderson. I would like to take a roll call of the City Council and remind you all that we will be doing roll call voting for the remainder of this meeting. At this time, I will call your name. Please let me know if you're participating. Mayor Pro Tem Mike Kennedy. Councilmember Foyer. I see him. We will call him and make sure he gets audio. Councilmember Seavers. Councilmember Dunn. Looks like he's connecting. Yeah, he's connecting. Councilmember Kurz. Councilmember Langford. Councilmember Comiscus. Councilmember Dunn. Or Councilmember Foyer. I can see them, so I'm going to continue on while we work out their volume issues. Also attending remotely is our City Administrator, City Attorney Sean Gouts. As I mentioned earlier, there are two opportunities for public comment if it works the way we hope it does. When that time comes, I will announce public participants for up to three minutes. For the record, please let me know your name and if you're a City Liberty Lake resident or not. If anyone was not speaking, we encourage you to mute your connection until it's time for you to speak. The first item on the agenda is the invocation. I want to make sure that Foyer can hear me. Oh, can we do it? Can Councilmember Dunn hear me? Alright, thank you. And we will hope that Phil gets in. God or Father, I ask that you watch over us. I ask that you protect our city. I ask that you guide us to make the best decisions possible during this time. I ask that you watch over everybody that is taking care of us, from fire to police, to nurses, to doctors, to first responders, and that you give us all the guidance to help get through this challenging time. And I thank you for any blessings. Jesus, amen. Okay, we will do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. You, the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and Okay. I will call this meeting to order. We're going to do a roll call. So I'm going to open up the first opportunity for citizen comments in case we have any. Oh yeah, let's do the agenda. Probably a good idea. You want to? Maybe a second? There, a second from Chris. I want a favor. Opposed? Okay, let's get to citizen comments. Are there any citizen comments for the first time? That being heard, we will move on to the COVID-19 update with our Chief of Police.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Just want to give you a high-level briefing of the COVID-19 response from a regional level and what we're doing here in the City of Liberty Lake. So first of all, the Emergency Coordination Center has been activated. And basically what that means is that we have an incident management team made up from professionals from all over the country here to help us through this pandemic that we are currently dealing with. Chief, if you can get closer to my phone.
I can't hear you.
Okay. I'll try this again. Can anybody hear me okay? Sure. Okay, very good. So just going to give you a quick briefing on the, our COVID-19 response from a regional level and a local level. So the Emergency Coordination Center has been set up and it's under some, a command structure that's called the Incident Command Structure. And because of the number of agencies involved in managing this pandemic, it's called a joint command. So that means that it's not just one agency that is running the show, if you will. There's representatives from law, fire, regional health, all involved in this. From a local level, we have a policy group. So we meet every single morning at eight o'clock. Liberty Lake is represented by Mayor Rickner, Katie Allen, and myself. At that joint, at that meeting, what we do is we provide our inputs, have our questions answered, and receive a daily briefing about what's going on on a regional level with the pandemic. So if you're a roll caller, you're presented at that group. If any of the council members have concerns or questions about the response to the COVID-19, please contact either the mayor, Katie, or myself, and we will take those concerns directly to the Emergency Coordination Center and the Incident Commander at that, at that meeting. Also, Liberty Lake's participating in the JIC, which is, stands for the Joint Information Center. So all messaging involving the COVID-19 response is done in a coordinated effort so that individual jurisdictions aren't not doing their own thing in this. So we want to have a joint message that goes out to the entire region. And so we've been following that. So if you look at the city's Facebook page, there's a COVID response that's put on there daily. And that's, all that information is coming out of that Joint Information Center. Liberty Lake Police Department has a representative that attends that meeting every afternoon so that we are there and have input into what that messaging is for our community. Two last things I have for you is there's a strategic planning process that's ongoing. It's a living document. Part of this group is doing a 30, 60, 90-day strategic plan for responding to COVID-19. Part of that plan includes something that's called Management Action Points, which are also, we call them triggers. So that as certain things happen in that strategic planning point, will trigger some type of action for, from this team that's been fit together. And lastly, before asking you any questions, is that we are currently working on putting together what's called an Alternative Care Campus, which is located at the Spokane County Fairgrounds. And part of that is an alternative care facility. So this is in preparation for any type of medical surge that our region might see with, where the patients that may be coming into the medical system overwhelm our current resources that we have. And so we're currently working on plans on setting up this, this center, an alternative care facility at the fairgrounds in the event, in the event that's needed. So with that, it's a really good response. It's a very coordinated effort with all of our regional partners. And Liberty Lake is well represented at these meetings and doing our part in making sure that we are doing what we can to make sure that we get through this successfully. So with that, that's all I have about the COVID-19 response. And we have been to answer any questions. Alright, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Financial Strategy with RJ Stevenson. RJ, you might have to focus.
Just, I'm going to try to share my screen.
Can you guys hear RJ? Hey RJ, you're going to have to get up there.
Yeah, that worked. Alright, first thing to discuss is on the dashboard for the month of March. What you're, what I want to report on is, is first is that arrow. It's kind of, we moved that down to revenue stress. Not that it's happening in the first quarter, which this report would show the opposite, but we know that there's revenue stress coming. And we reported last month, looking at specifically the restaurants, that we weren't going to see decreases until probably late May, early June. With the car sales and construction being, quarantine at the end of March, we really won't see revenue stress happening until late June, but we know we need to start making some projections, some forecasts based on what we know is coming. But what the positive side is, as the first quarter, our sales tax is 10% higher than it was at this time last year. So we're exceeding, we're exceeding our budget expectations. Because we literally covered, collected more sales taxes in the last half of the year. The, one of the other positive things is that we've got our reimbursement from the county for Lyft. So that reimbursed our two refunds, also reimbursed our general funds. Our cash balance is almost up there to about $4 million, which, which puts us at a good point from a cash standpoint. I think the other item I wanted to show, I'm going to be right back when I show a different screen. Is that?
He's on a bigger screen. There you go.
Yeah? So this is a screen that we, we're looking at, kind of gauge where we think we're at. We created a four tiers system. Tier one is everything's fine. And where we're at right now is a tier two monitoring, which means we're watching, we're contacting local businesses, trying to get an idea where car sales, RV sales, how they're going to, how they feel that they're going to maneuver for the next couple of months. We're looking at our own expenses. Obviously, we can't do training travel right now because everything's canceled, but those would be items, discretionary expenditures that we're going to stop. We're going for our budgets, just looking at areas that we know we can postpone until we're through this. We're also watching, making sure what outside influences there are when it comes to the federal state government. That also includes what kind of grant or KIMA money might be available. And also just watching what other items that might have to be quarantined. Then if, as we go through this, we would move into a tier three. When we know where the forecast goes, how long it's going to last, and then we would move through this. So this is kind of what our tracking system is, to kind of communicate with the council, with the mayor regarding our financial position. Like I said, Katie and I tomorrow are going to meet with some of the other regional cities, Cheney, Airway Heights, and Spokane Valley. Kind of compare and observe how each of us will be acting to this, to the economy.
Any questions for RJ?
Yeah, so the high school is probably placed about seven to eight percent ahead of where we were at this time last year.
Okay, so we're able to say that, that we're pretty close to where we were last year this time?
Correct.
Okay, RJ, thank you.
Any other questions for RJ? So I currently, I reached out to our largest car dealership, George G., and they're right now at about 50% where they normally would be, which they were pleasantly surprised with. They're getting a lot of online purchases as of right now. So that's trending in a positive direction in comparison to where they thought they would be. But keep in mind, that is still clearly for them as well.
So as for RVs, I still have, I have to make a couple of phone calls and see if they're willing to share. I know Allsport has been doing, they're, they're doing better than I think what we expected going in this, but they just shut down last week.
We're doing those calculations. We had a conversation earlier about that.
Yeah, and one of the things that we're probably doing different is with some of the other states that have just in general a 20% reduction in revenue. We're going to take a look, a closer look at actually how we fare with our industries that we have out here and just kind of hitting the general, what happened.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll get those to you. Any other questions for RJ?
I have a question, please.
Go ahead.
This is, RJ, I appreciate the fact that you put this out because it means a lot to us to be able to see where we're at. As you know, we're competing not only locally, but regionally, and actually worldwide, and we're all facing the same type of problems. One of the things that apparently some states and not necessarily ours and the government is receiving criticism on is being slow in response. And I'm looking at our tier two monitoring. And I'm not criticizing, but I am asking whether or not we should be more in a clear territory of trying to react. And I understand that there are sections within the tier such as seasonal layoffs, no discretionary spending, et cetera. I'm not advocating layoffs, okay? I am advocating no travel, reduced professional services, and reduced services. And we've already closed our parks and all hits. So I'm wondering in light of that, what is your feeling? And my stories of the council feel are being just a tad more proactive instead of having to jump arbitrarily.
So as a point of clarification for all the council, we have already implemented the no discretionary spending. We're only doing essentials at this point. So when you look at the tier three status, the only thing that has not been implemented really is the seasonal staff layoffs.
And that was a strong point, sir. Thanks very much. We are absolutely at a tier three, just by your decision.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions for RJ? And we will continue to keep you guys updated as we progress through this tier process. I, I do want to say that we have been having some quite a few meetings and monitoring this very closely, and we will continue to do so to make sure that we're really making the best decisions possible for our entire community's sake. I'm going to move on at this point to Mayor and City Council reports. Are there any City Council members that have any reports? Go ahead, Mike?
I'm going to, just, okay, yeah. Uh, just a quick, um, actions in the regional mentality. Uh, Washington Trust Bank has been, in the terms of implementing the Bill of Rights, angle protection line, uh, against the CARE Act. Uh, the legislation that works in from, uh, right, we can now translate to small-differeous loans, uh, about 100% or less. Um, the amount of big stuff that's legislation, which would be solidified by the terms of law, but the expense on payroll, mortgage, or utility expense would be terminated. So, um, I now commercial banks are in those as fast as they can, bringing in their customers for, uh, call it small diff, on their, probably anything we've never seen. Um, super excited to be part of, from a big machine, uh, to be able to provide this thing at the small diff level. Um, and if it's perfect, it might be at that. Uh, the number of, the number of, our bill mechanism are true, are, to be able to identify all of our, to identify small differences like, uh, commercial bank too. And so for me, he wants to, uh, us. Uh, the action has, um, been exciting and a really happy part, uh, from repair and, and on the regional mentality. So, uh, I'm going to, uh, our work is in the north. Uh, the time is now to do the commercial anchor. Let's talk about the potential, uh, benefit activities. Uh, I'm going to, um, just to make sure the board is out, uh, looking for, uh, uh, smaller, uh, small difference.
Mr. Kennedy?
Uh, with that, uh, that, that all of that different, uh, actually, uh, retail, uh, so, uh, the, uh, the RVs on the background and that, that what we did was that the food, uh, restaurant in Liberty Lake, that's also getting, uh, goes down, go out, they moved their entire operation over to post halls. So just kind of, you know, there's something that's, and just to think, out of the long-term effect of the short-term, like, oh, it's, they're feeling this, and they're trying to get solidate. And it's, it's not, uh, like, hey, how can this just can do this? It doesn't have a reason to love trying to solidate their sales. Their sales are a little stronger than I know they are here because of sales tax. They felt that would be somewhere, a lot of, uh, that I haven't, that's served for a long period of time. Because it was so heavily, we're running on the RV, and, uh, I don't know. We have to keep in mind, uh, kind of our RV vendors here. It stands, uh, over our stores throughout the United States. The back of the eighties, where the RV business, and we start going to something similar. This, uh, for money, tie-up, uh, people who came back, they ended up spending money. And the industry started to solidate their inventory. And, uh, actually, we started taking inventory, making existing RV vendors. And so that's a different part of the United States, we still, we're still strong. So I do love to stick that in mind as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Excuse me, I want to ask you a question on that, on Turner. Well, I'm just curious, we, that is temporary, by, look at all of that, that goes up together. I didn't take it, right, they didn't, they, I didn't get into that, too, because I, I didn't want to push the envelope that far. Uh, my gun tells me that it would be temporary when things spring back. Did you have, did you have a market, there were pay warrants? Did you have a lease there, so that could still play? Like, I, I expect, I expect the counter, if I don't have that.
Any other council reports?
Oh, yes, uh, Mayor, can you see my hand up in there?
Yes, I'm.
Oh, it's great. Okay, thank you. Uh, just want to report that I had the opportunity last week to attend by, um, the, uh, the W C, uh, they, uh, besides the normal, uh, making committee work, uh, a meeting, uh, two and a half hours long. And during that, of course, we discussed the upcoming, uh, Spokane hosting of the A W C convention, uh, or the site, uh, scan, and all that's currently being considered. So we don't know exactly if we're going to have an admission this year. Uh, so some of the elections that you're normally seeing, such as the, uh, work positions, they still, uh, take place, they can take place again by social media, uh, or just soon. So we don't know, that could be a full decision yet as to whether or not it's going to be canceled, but obviously, it's looking that way. And as we time, in general, stand together of why these things are taking place, why hotels, convention centers, RV centers, all that are all losing, uh, are losing money, or are hitting a temperate boat. That should be a whole variety of concern of ours. And I'm proud that you, Mayor, and RJ, and Katie have taken the right measure to make sure that we are guarding what we have now. Because, like, frankly, it's my opinion and only mine, I suppose, that things will get weak. And even if we pull out of the COVID, uh, the longer the economy is shut down, the more each one of us is going to have some problems, or attempt to, 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 to do this thing. So I think that these, yeah, the careful, sort of, thoughts of our minds as we progress. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other council member reports? Okay, I have a few things that I wanted to say. Our Chief of Police took a look at our responses to calls from this year, at this time, compared to last year, to see if we've seen any major influx of crimes being committed in our city. And I'm proud to say that we haven't, we have not seen any, uh, which is phenomenal. We've not seen any increases in crime, which is great. And I really want to say how proud I am of our community. We have seen people step up on every level humanly possible. Uh, we've had citizens volunteer to help in any way that they can. We've had citizens reach out to their neighbors, which I appreciate and would encourage that you continue to look out for your neighbors, with my being assistance, uh, whether they're elderly or disabled. And I ask that you continue to support our local businesses, to Councilmember Langford's point. Uh, this is a hard time financially, uh, that's going to impact everybody. Uh, and we need to continue to support those businesses that chose Liberty Lake to call home. Um, not only the restaurants, but other businesses that are able to continue to do business within our city. So I will move on from that to our City Administrator report. Katie?
Thank you, Mayor. Do I, can you have one here, or just over there? My apologies for not getting the council a copy of our report ahead of time, but I'll work to do that, uh, before our next council meeting, January 21st. So, um, not on the agenda is an action related to our entry service proposal. This has to do with generators and some other things over in our police department. I want to turn it over to Jen Camp. Tonight, we're not, we want to answer your questions. The actual vote on this contract would be next council meeting on April 21st.
So, this is Jen. Hello, welcome. Thank you, councilmembers. Um, at the last meeting, I introduced the, uh, the proposal that I was hoping to have it on.
And or the other, the other rooms in the police department. Uh, our assumption is that it will cover uh the whole police department and and or a good portion of the library, but until we get in there and do some engineering and study in, uh, I can't answer that question. Is uh exactly.
With the document, it's had until they know what that the generators are in the service, that's why I ask the question.
Yeah. So we built some contingency into the funding that would come back to the city if not used. So if um we expect a piece of equipment that is way too small, uh, we would ask the city to utilize some of the contingency. Our proposal is a gross maximum not to exceed cost. The city has a right to say, you should have known that that was a fifty KW unit as opposed to forty-five KW. Um, and at that point, if that's the the situation, we don't think it will be, then Ameresco would take into account and they would accommodate a larger unit to cover um what is in the proposal as far as load capacity for what we know today.
Okay, thank you. My next question, there's a our uh section here regarding hazardous waste. It talks about the possible full disposal by verified hazardous waste. And then it says, um, uh, should we provide your additional removal with a smaller one? I didn't have, there you go. Um, that will basically be an extra, so maybe it's probably better to tell them that what uh, on the end of what happens if you're a might be.
Yeah, so since we did not uh lift the piece of equipment off of a roof curb, that would be an asbestos potential.
That's what I figured.
Yeah.
Did you have to determine that there now then?
We were not able to know.
So that the uh asbestos has made it very costly.
I agree. Where are the assumptions that there shouldn't be any hotspots in the city?
Right. How was the building?
I don't know.
Uh, I'd have to look that up.
Well, just something to be aware of is there's the awesome factors that that's not uncommon. All right, here, um, my next question. Can you help me understand how what the $700 is during DES project management? And to each of this DES, I think that's been due for us. Does it does it make anything at all what they provide this document?
So DES is the state's Department of Enterprise Services, their energy division. So they ran a um, a solicitation to select energy services companies such as Ameresco, and that meets the procurement. So they oversee and project manage the project and the contract. So the city has a interagency agreement with the Department of Enterprise Services, and Ameresco has a contract with the Department of Enterprise Services. So contractually, we work through DES to deliver the work.
Phil, Captain Summer Flair, uh, Katie just let me know that she's thinking that the building was built in the late eighties. I can verify that at a later time for you, but thirty, thirty years.
Thirty years. Thank you. And my next question, uh, we have a question, is this a comment? Um, the project cost, the project cost proposed is out there in the last eighties. Uh, after that, uh, you use a right to adjust the pricing, so just wanted to tell us a little bit where that is. Thank you. Read that.
Yeah, there are a couple of things that drove that that comment. Um, copper prices, right, you got a generator that's got copper prices that that can fluctuate from week to week. Um, and also, some of the union trades are receiving a pay increase beginning in June first. But rest assured that the gross maximum not to, not to exceed project cost is that amount in the proposal. So um, if we can get it contracted sooner rather than later, we can protect those prices. But we're, we're not anticipating a big uptick of maybe two percent. Um, but we factored that in, uh, we've got some contingency to work that we can work with um as well, so.
Okay. And my next, and my next question is, can your exclusions section talks about our replacement work. Says there were big batchings here and it's not included in your globe. But you suck at making it into the roof or you can work on these brackets.
So we're expecting not to have to get into the roof, the equipment has been specified to put, to fit right on the curb, so like-for-like replacement?
Okay. Um, last, oh, my last question. Yes, uh, down here at the very bottom of the top here, this is your best, uh, the um, let's see, there's a provided by this $180 about one time every year.
One time. The, the project has, I think, a twelve hundred dollar annual energy savings? With a twelve, check my notes here.
That will be for the whole job or for the unit?
For the whole project.
And I think, I think we, I think we're updating the, the age of the building to ninety-two.
Okay, sounds.
Yeah, which makes sense because they were saying that we're talking this for ninety-three or ninety-four, so they're original. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, I guess what we will be present uh solar. Uh, I guess I'm disappointed that they don't seem like the United States is pushing towards solar being such a hot thing. And yet we're getting rid of that. And I understand that it is not effective or hasn't been effective. Uh, it would be nice if we asked information about that. Uh, over on page four of thirty, other guarantee use. Uh, a little, it's quite a low, but the little exception is when Chris said, I agree with some of those advice that the energy savings only happen when they're over a dollar a year. Uh, something like that. But other guarantee this, it talks about this corresponds with ninety percent of designated energy savings. I get a little confused with some ninety percent designated energy savings only amounts to about $100. So if you're not capable, give us a response now. The next, right now, it would be nice that we could have a response to that.
So I can tell you where the twelve hundred dollars in energy savings came from. The equipment, because of its size and its operation time, there's not a whole lot of energy savings opportunities within those pieces of equipment. When we looked at the entire project, which consisted of eight other projects across the city, was a total project value of one point seven million. That total project had a hundred and twenty thousand a year in annual energy savings. When we pulled out these three items to fit budget and strategy for, for twenty twenty, the, the large energy consuming equipment fell out. That's where you see a smaller um, energy savings component.
Um, thank you, but I'll be honest with you, I, I would give you at this point, which is not the most high, but um, I would give you a second to think. And, uh, did you respond to something on the, uh, solar?
So the solar um was, was a bit of a mystery and has failed and um at this point is not repairable? Is that how you would assess it?
Yeah, so we took a quick look at it and um the inverters, a couple of them don't appear to be operating properly. And because of the solar storage uh systems and their volatility, we decided that, you know, it, we turned it over to the city and say, look, I don't, you guys need, can tell us what to do, but it's um, it's not working properly. And once you put your, once you start working on those units, you could uh create a few other problems that weren't part of the investigation. So that's why we leaned more towards a natural gas standby generator.
Well, without receiving those questions, but I guess this is not going to show this process down, but they did give us information. How effective the water was when they were working.
I, I mean. That's a question I can't answer um at this point, um, because I don't know that they were ever working while I was here. Um, I think, I don't know, Chief, do you know when they may have failed or? Chief, uh, Chief may have a little insight?
So, so the solar project and the public safety building was done through a grant process uh, long time ago. Um, and so the, the technology at the time was to use a battery backup system. And so if you've ever seen it, it's banks and banks and banks of batteries for power storage. Uh, and so, right, so what happened is that the inverters, we did have a failure on one of the inverters early on, uh, on power inverters, that was replaced under warranty um by the, the solar company that did the install. Uh, we since had additional failures to those power inverters, which then really makes that system not functional. My understanding is that the organization that did the install um of that uh system is no longer in business. Um, and so therefore, when we're researching as to, um, you know, if this, if we could do something with our current system, uh, it just became a fact of the, the age of the solar panels themselves, that the inverters were failing, we did not have another company that could uh fix it. Um, and then the battery storage itself is probably not the uh best reliability for a uh, a backup system for the public safety building. Because even um with all that storage of, of battery capacity, there's only like a forty-eight hour um, uh, of backup power based on, on that, and which may not get us to a, a long-term crisis anymore.
Oh, here's the forty hour, we, we, we only have, so it's supposed to be charging. I, I read the three things that I might have missed. The analysis that made what you just said about the uh solar. Is there an analysis in here that I have missed?
No, not, not in the report. There, there's not, other than we know that it is, uh, when we, we, we learned that the system failed because of a, we had a, some type of a power surge or something happened where that we lost our, our server to the city, we lost power to the police department building. And I think they had to do it, um, I don't know what caused the power surge itself, but we learned right then that our backup system did not work.
We do have a little information we can share, but we can talk more. A couple more I can develop, uh, it's current state and, and uh, what, and so, that I just don't have a, a problem.
This is Rob with Ameresco.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
You bet.
If I, if I, I think I'll let her speak off. If I may, is the chief of chairs or whoever, and for me, when was the council notified that the solar wasn't properly working? This is the first time I'm hearing about it, perhaps understand though.
Well, I think we had a, a pretty major issue when that, when they noticed a failure because we lost our city server, which is all our email um that went down at that point. And that's when we learned that that wasn't working and that was, yeah, probably, that was probably I don't know, six, seven years ago?
I can tell you, I started in June twelve and it happened before I got here. This is where we're at.
Just, just, you know, that's why I, it's the first time I'm hearing about it. And the fact that nobody's even investigated whether or not they can be repaired. There's other solar companies out there besides that one, I'm sure. And it would have caused to get done or get chrome or change inverters and that, or whatever else is necessary. Again, this is just being software driven and it's not being logically driven. Yes, and thanks.
Is it, is it, I'd like to make a question?
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay, um, uh, uh, I wanna recognize number one by the power and defer to um the staff's judgment in favor of being a reliable and excellent, uh, organ, and a contemporary source to give sustained power emergency events uh for public safety. Uh, I resolved that public safety remains of the city's primary focus and just want to say the powering of the building remains at a high level of our objective. Uh, related to the solar panels that are present on the building. Um, I would like to consider how it at least maybe the array of cells could be restored for operation in a reasonable power to a good center. I think that um if the, uh, solar cells are operational, uh, they are a source of revenue to the city. So I think it's reasonable to uh make one path of, uh, probably a reliable service, uh, professional services to try to determine that, uh, if the array of candy, um, and it's for a, call it a backup storage mechanism, but more prone to a power generation mechanism. Um, and that's, I think, potentially still higher term than the city. So, um, yeah, I just did, uh, see if the array of cells are operational, whatever those other inverters that are in effect.
Can I make a comment? This is Rob hanging in with Ameresco. So we looked at the, the life cycle of those panels and the inverter. And this is all exclusive of the strategic capital planning software. So they were twenty years, older than twenty years. They were early generation solar panels, I'm not sure exactly which type. But those solar panels only lived for about thirty years. And so running the math, they were closer to the edge of their life cycle. And given the inverter problem, um, it just didn't seem like the right resources were to be placed on an engineering study only to come up with something that wasn't productive. If you think about it from a resilient perspective, natural gas, un, uninterruptible natural gas is pretty much a hundred percent runtime. So the, the standby generator that's powered by natural gas provides resilient power in a standby situation. So those were some of the factors that led into the decision-making. There, there is still the interagency agreement, I'm sorry, the interconnect agreement in place with the Vista. I did notice that, that's still there. But I don't know how much revenue the city had made historically.
It's about fifteen hundred to two thousand a year, so I can't think of that, so it's not a.
Go ahead, Mike.
I, I appreciate what you're saying, I, I, I would agree with you too. But we would not have the length of your special or talk about that on the solar. Okay, but thanks to you who said and have been in this report.
So, so this is Rob with Ameresco, we were not asked to write a report and include the solar in this study. So that's why you're not seeing anything.
That's more, okay, I appreciate you saying that, probably in the future, we, we need to maybe move more to the children on that because we kind of know we have all the panels up there. So that we receive that, that's naturally what we have these questions, these questions.
Yeah, this is Rob with Ameresco, I, I think that's a fair question and we have a little bit of information that we can share with you um regarding, we did take an electrical engineer out, uh, a gentleman from H to E, very knowledgeable gentleman, and collectively, that's what we came up with is where, should the city spend their money and resources and it seemed like going on this path because of the resiliency of natural gas was the right decision.
Right, got that through your explanation, appreciate it.
You bet, thanks.
Make the recommendation, okay?
I think, please.
Make the recommendation.
Um, Council, this is Katie Allen, and I just wanted to, based on the number of questions and additional information that's being requested, why don't you let us do some more homework, not bring it back to on April twenty-first and bring some additional information? Is that agreeable?
That's great. That's the answer on it. Yeah, maybe just a second, that would be great, Katie, just a last word, decision safe, like that you can turn to.
That's fine.
Okay, um, so I'm gonna move along, the next question is about our council retreat. Currently it is scheduled for Sunday, April nineteenth. In light of the governor's stay home, stay safe till May fourth, um, our recommendation is that maybe we defer it. Uh, I don't know if there's a specific timeline that the council has in mind, or we just defer it until further notice. So that's a question, an open question for the council to deal with some of that.
Yes, very likely.
Go ahead, Mike.
So we have a discussion, I think, the motion that we, we defer it at this point?
So the mo- So the motion is to- Yes, the motion is to defer it until further notice, all in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Opposed? Nice, have it.
So I'm gonna just recap, it will call vote, nobody voted no, so all of you will show up as vote A B A. Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, I'm going to now, uh, I have two or three more things, but they'll vote quickly. COVID nineteen, I know our chief and our mayor talked a lot about the things that are going on in our community and at a strategic regional coordination effort. What I also wanted to share with you is we have met with all of our departments. When I say we, uh, Mayor Brinkner and myself, as well as all of the directors, have met with our employees, I think we're on four, three to four meetings, um, at least once a week to provide information to our employees about the um legislation and federal acts that are in place so that they are aware of what their benefits are and how they can make arrangements to receive those benefits that are described in the Family First Coronavirus Act. I may not have that exactly correct, but that's, so we've done, um, I think our employees have appreciated knowing what's going on and we, it's real, it's real time. Um, and so we're doing the best we can to keep our employees uh informed. Also, communication with our community, we do receive a lot of phone calls about um activities that are happening, those are federal to our police department and our chief is following up on all of those. As you can imagine, it's everything from skateboarding to roofing to contractors to people um maybe going to a business that's opening and so it's a whole breadth of issues and questions that come up. And we're, we're, I think we're doing a pretty good job answering questions on the phone calls that we receive, Facebook, as well as our website. So those are the kind of three ways that we're trying to get information to our community. And then finally, I was just gonna mention that all city programs in advance are canceled until May fourth. And so, you know, all of our traditional um, the historic counties, you know, one, Arbor Day, I won't go through all of them, Jed's keeping track of them, but because of the governor's order, they are all canceled until May fourth and perhaps longer. The reality is that the planning groups are like a garage sale, like a Memorial Day breakfast, and you guys know all of our events, all of those are being pretty much revisited by some of the nonprofits. So I have two more things I'm gonna mention, what is a Vista, wanted me to let you know that the smart meters are going in in our community on June twenty-second through August tenth. Um, there's a phone, a call in town hall meeting on April twenty-second, and I'll send some more information on that. And also, I wanted to let you know, there's no impact to city buildings. Um, they're coordinating directly with Trevor Rayan and um, we're able to accommodate their needs and change in elements. So that's good news. And then finally, Wash Dot put all of their construction contracts on hold. Um, they are willing to do a maintenance and I, I believe uh repairs that are life, have a life safety issue associated with them, and also the fish passage uh funding is still moving forward. So we are not stopping on any of our contract, are there, any of our projects? So let me give you just a quick update, Henry Road is still in design and it's moving forward. In our interpretation of the governor's um essential facilities, it meets the test. And so our consulting firm is continuing to design. And then finally, on the Harvard Road widening project, we're putting the finishing touches on the on the favorable documents and then we'll turn it over to uh Wash Dot. We're still hoping that it's gonna go this year, but to be very, very honest with you, so much hinges on, you know, how this coronavirus situation is gonna play out in the months to come. So nothing is for sure right now. And Mayor, that could be my report.
Sure. Chris, do you have a question?
Kathy, it's almost like I understand that, you know, you said, um, you said this here, it's a lot of that's what you're third hole. But um, what happened to the last point that we made?
We lost you, Chris.
When you say, uh, we, we invited our people off, not even, and, you know.
So Chris, we have had very, very brief conversations with Wash Dot and also our county commissioners who are strongly advocating for our project in light of the proximity to the school, et cetera. Um, it is, they're not committing one way or the other. I think as this plays out, we'll get more information. We have not been notified that the unpause list, the list that we're on now, that to receive funding has changed. But, you know, luck can happen. So we're watching it, but there's nothing definitive.
Yeah, I, I thought that, you know, and some of these, I, now, like, we have to make sure very, very, actually, quite a lot.
Yeah, that's a great question, I, I'll go up with Wash Dot and see if the governor actually signed it. After the COVID nineteen situation, we had a shift of gears, but I'll go back and find out if the governor is actually signed it.
Okay, moving on to consent, consent agenda. Mayor Proton Kennedy. Oh, you have a question, Adam?
Please.
Go ahead.
Katie, could you, uh, and this may be all, because I apologize if I hit the target, but what is the status on the final line count for all the property donations that we've worked on? There's our year of assistance. What is those?
Those were the property that was so one point two million dollars was the assessed valuation for the property that we were, the right way we were received from uh Centennial Properties, one point two million.
Is that being reviewed by a second person?
It, that were, correct, that review is complete and it confirmed the one point two million.
And here, we could watch the impact that that may have on us.
Based on our engineer's estimate on a program le, program level design, we still feel that we can deliver this project within that six million dollar figure at this time. And we had a consultant on, on board, so RJ and I have done a lot of analysis and I won't go through all the details of it, but based on our scenarios, we would have to miss the budget by thirty percent in order to have a cost that exceeds six million dollars from the city. And I wanna look at RJ, okay, that, is that correct?
Yeah, we can um, send up, now, what we presented back in Jan, where we, what we thought the over is what, what we're.
So we did the what-if scenarios and it was, we didn't, we had to um overspend the project by thirty percent before the six million dollars would increase.
But we did get what we thought additionally on the profit. In other words, we're not going as much as that six thousand into the right, please, et cetera, that we thought. So how will we make that part of?
Yeah, I'm not, hmm.
We don't have to get more than one point to make is one of the correct things. And there, previous mayor was talking about five to six days just based on that. Um, and I may be wrong, but it was a higher pressure I was on than what you think. So how will we be able to make that portion of? to make that portion of?
So why don't you let RJ and I put the figures together? Because I don't want to be just pulling numbers out of the air, but I can tell you at a conceptual level, our, I'll say the implication that we had when we executed the Washdaw contract was that the City of Liberty Lake would be on the hook for $6 million, and we got the credit of 1.2. But your question is, were we originally being told that it was going, the value of that right away credit was going to be larger? And, you know, I, that could very well be the case, so we'll have to bring back those numbers for you.
Whatever.
Yeah. And I will say, um, that the reimbursement at this point in time, and it's not that we want to ever waste money, but that our projection, the cost of the project and the reimbursement out of the tip and lift fully covers our, our costs associated with contributions to this project.
Thank you so much, Katie.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, we will move on to action items. Mayor Proton Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. We are, um, a month approaching the World City Council's March 17, 2020 special meeting, that are the City Council events, March 17, 2020, to coordinate.
I recognize that Chris seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Hearing no, one opposed. We move on to the next one.
Okay. 82, 87, $20,000, 35,000, 34,000, $30,000, 35,000.
I hear a second from Chris, all in favor?
Question?
Question from Mr. Foyer.
Thank you. Uh, RJ?
Yep.
Okay. The, on the line is, refers to this, hoping to really fire part of your services for regular social protective inspection, if you know what that is.
They, uh, I'm going to attempt my best, Lisa probably the best one to explain it. They provide inspection services for, um, projects, house, uh, their own inspection, and we do a pass through, so you got it. Katie's going to help me answer.
Council member Foyer, so Lisa put together an agreement with the fire department that we contract their services for fire inspection and review of plans. Then the contractor, um, it's a pass through like RJ says, so we build them, uh, the developer, and then receive the money and pass it back to the fire department.
Is that related to building perget?
Correct. And Lisa's shaking her head, so Lisa, I don't know if you can talk, but she gave me the thumbs up.
That's all I need, thank you.
Okay. So we had a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no, one opposed. We move on to general business, Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank motion to approve people on all price and error sign, they don't call the great one, really landscape for certified our services and in all of them, up to $35,000. Sorry.
Comments from the council or questions?
Yeah, um, with regard to getting our financial position on the top earlier about, um, you know, uh, we can take special services, is this all, I have special services, uh, of miles, and, uh, or is it, I understand July, so like, well, we, we have a shortage of staff, um, and it is like, and it's a special project, so how was that?
Yeah, so we...
I don't know.
Yeah, so we had a conversation about this earlier today during our director's meeting, and we had a discussion that the services are ongoing to be utilized when staff do not have the ability, um, to do the, the, uh, services that are requested, and that it'll be used on a limited basis, especially in understanding the times we're in. It will typically be used when it's something that our staff doesn't have the, uh, the background to handle.
Or the...
Or the equipment. But we do recognize the, uh, financial position we're in, and we have discussed that, and we are being attentive to how we utilize them. So hearing no further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none opposed, that passes. General business number two.
Uh, motion to, uh, B2, operate their sign, don't call the great, three, three landscape, landscape maintenance services, they're up, up to $35,000.
Hear a second from Chris, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That passes as well. General business number three.
Motion to, uh, three, some of our smart thing, our, our, they are, they have $8,000, uh, control office, they reverse land share agency.
Hear a second, hear a second from Chris, discussion?
Other question?
Councilmember Kennedy.
I believe it's, it was about 70,000 or so, it's just, it's just a, uh, part of the final.
So, um, the, the, this specific is actually to do the concrete wall around the roundabout. Back in December, uh, we, uh, approved, uh, a bid from R and R Ministry to prepare the bricks that would go on the outside of the wall, so Bacon will be doing the construction of the concrete. That was damaged, uh, R and R would do the bricks on it. So we had to wait until the season got a little warmer.
Is it the damaged concrete of the wall?
Yes.
Prefer that, Katie?
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Foyer.
Thank you. So, uh, does it, the document survive, but I think you're already getting estimate, not a hold, is there a reason for that?
We, uh, they're on small works, uh, we issued for three quotes, Bacon was the only one to quote on that. He says that's the, uh, their estimated cost to repair what's been damaged out there. So...
I guess that my question is, estimate is a rough idea, I'm obviously, we're behind it.
Councilmember Foyer, this is Katie. Uh, because insurance is paying for it, when we receive the full bill, we'll be reimbursed 100%.
Not hearing any, all in favor?
Aye.
I think we all sold the, every essential way.
We did.
I suppose that, that died back there for...
So...
He was, he was frozen, and then went away.
So I, I recognize that, uh, Councilmember Langford is no longer on, able to join us. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have it. And resolution?
Do you need council members? First resolution is resolution number 20269, City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington. A resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, authorizing the adoption of the Spokane County Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Mayor Proton Kennedy?
Motion to approve resolution 20269.
I hear a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Resolution number 20 dash 269 passes. Next resolution.
Resolution number 20 dash 270, City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington. A resolution providing for the disposal of certain inventory items deemed to be surplus to the reasonably foreseeable needs of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington.
Mayor Proton Kennedy?
Okay. Motion for resolution 20 dash 270.
I hear a second from Councilmember Foyer, all in favor?
Aye.
Question, sorry, Mr. Kennedy.
Yeah, aye. That's okay. Hey, uh, those I, how we actually regulate those, because of the public support, it's our network.
Auction.
We, we take these, we, um, we s- we send it, and I think they do it by blocks, uh, at an auction facility.
Oh, gotcha, okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Foyer.
The record, I think, that, that, that's not here.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution number 20 dash 270 passes. And?
City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington, resolution number 02 dash 048E. A resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, admitting resolution number 02 dash 048D, passed by the city council on November 20th, 2018, entitled, "A Resolution Adopting a Financial Management Policy for the City of Liberty Lake, Washington."
Mayor Proton Kennedy?
I'm, uh, I'm, uh, we're, we're, we're number 02 dash 048E.
I got a second from Councilmember Severs, Severs, discussion?
Uh, question?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, but I assume the only change to the entire document is on page 28.
That is correct.
Thank you, I think there is all that.
Yeah, you bet. That was Councilmember Foyer that asked that question. Okay, hearing no further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none opposed, resolution number 02 dash 048E passes. Introduction of upcoming agenda items.
If, if, if we can now say, how can we, like, if we can able to rejoin us?
Yes, I do see Councilmember Langford has rejoined us.
Councilmembers, next meeting will be April 21st. We will may be changing some of our technology arrangements, but we will provide you information. Strongly encourage everyone to try to call in about 15 minutes ahead of time so we can make sure that all of our connections and audio and everything's working. Um, on that note, we have a very light agenda. We will provide you with a COVID-19 update, um, on the financial side, the strategic side, that Chief Bassman's described, the communication that we've had with our community and our employees. And then the Ameresco Energy Service Proposal will be on the agenda to provide more information based on some of the questions we received today. And then finally, um, the county has a commute trip reduction program, which we are part of here in Liberty Lake. A lot of that is driven by our large employers. They need us to update, um, our agreement with them, the man is the program, and so it's, it's very, um, normal that this happens every year, and I got a call from them, and they're asking that we renew our agreement with them. So there are several agreements that will be for you to consider. But as far as, that's the end of the agenda, uh, at this point in time.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Kennedy?
Uh, yeah, my next to me, you know, we're going to have an executive session by chance to bring it up to date on any of the regional items we had, well, the last two executive sessions.
End of May, we will.
There we go.
Any further comments from the council? Okay, I'm going to open it up to your citizen comments. This is your second chance. Hearing none, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for, uh, participating. Stay healthy.